...streets and public buildings with Mr. Fair.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I'm gonna do, we only have 15 minutes, David, so there are an awful lot of things you need to cover here. And what I'd like to do, if you would, because we discussed this, but if, after one of the things that we're talking about, if you want us to deal with that this evening, you know, let us know.
I will do that.
Turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. I guess the first, what on John's list is the easements, or the right-of-ways, dedicating the right-of-ways down there in Chestnut and Sandusky. Everybody's fairly familiar with that. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer them real quick, but you've, you know, you've had the drawings for a month now, so, and the project is done. Yeah, Nancy?
Kind of a thing of the past. It's a thing of the past, really.
Sure.
Just making it official to the state.
Right. You have to accept it to be used as a street right-of-way.
Any other questions about that particular piece?
No, sir.
So, we're good to go for that one tonight, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it's third reading on that one.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it is third reading, yes. What about the next one, David?
Okay, then, the next project, and Cameron, if you can find a picture where these bridges are, I think they'd be interested in seeing where the bridges are at. We applied for and got Community Development Block Rat to replace two bridges in kind of the northeast area of town. One is a couple blocks east of Pleasant Street School on Catherine Street, just north of Pleasant, and the other one is just north of Pleasant on Saiker Road. Both of them you can barely see. You just drive over them and it's hard to even realize they're there. But they're both deteriorated and have a low rating. You know, we have to rate these every year with the state, so. We would plan to do the Catherine Street Bridge first, right, Mr. Keaton?
Yes. Catherine Street is ready to go.
And then Saiker will be looked regularly this summer.
North of Pleasant, north of Pleasant, okay. Did we just, did we, is it Braddock? Did we do one of those?
We just did Braddock.
Okay, yeah.
I had a question this week. Are bridges inspected every year?
Every year.
Every year. And who does that?
We have, well, us and ODOT, state routes in town are inspected by ODOT.
Okay.
By the West High Street, ODOT inspects those. This new program that's coming out this year, we had nine bridges that we were responsible for, the city responsible for in the past. There's a new program coming out this year that ODOT is offering to inspect those nine bridges at no cost.
That's a good deal.
So, we are going to give that pride.
We passed a resolution on it.
Yeah, you just approved it a couple months ago.
May I ask, on the Saiker Road Bridge, will traffic be maintained on Saiker Road?
No.
How are we gonna do this on the right side?
Saiker Road will be closed when that project...
I don't know. Okay. So, that is, that is just north of Coshockton Avenue where the bridge is.
Just north of Pleasant Street.
Oh, just north of Pleasant.
On the same run, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Okay. How long would you estimate that Saiker Road will be closed?
I would hope that within two weeks we'd be able to get it in close enough back.
Is there a workaround?
Local traffic, you got, local traffic, you got Braddock, Rangel's Side Street, you have to go up to the top up there and actually...
And then get it back out onto Saiker?
Yes.
Okay. I'm thinking of pool traffic.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I was thinking about, too.
Yeah.
And fair traffic.
Catherine Street is gonna be the first one we do, and, you know, by the time we bid, Catherine Street and get it going and Saiker Road, it'll be closer to the fall.
Oh, okay.
A pool season will be over.
All right, that's good.
That's good. Fair will be over.
Yeah.
Camp Saiker will be over.
Camp Saiker is during the pool.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you want that tonight?
Do we need to start bidding on Catherine Street?
I mean, as soon as you guys approve it, I can put it out for bid.
Because we don't meet again in June till the end.
Right.
That would be great, then.
Just pass it tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
What about, what's the next one, 50?
You get that, let's see, 50 is the annual paving list. We included a copy of that in your package this week, right? So, you have that?
Yep.
Yep.
And we're at eight, just shy of $850,000. 430 or 440 of which is supplied by State's Issue One. And you have a copy of all the streets that we're proposing to do. I did a question. So, we pass this to go into contract tonight. You're basically wanting to go to contractor, resurface what you have listed, correct? Yeah, we have to go, we have to go out to bid first. And you'll bid these specific streets, or you bid specific miles? No, we bid these specific streets. I have a question. West High Street, right there at the Viaduct, that happens to be as rough as an ocean. This side, not the Viaduct, this side of the bridge on West High Street, is that in any plan anywhere to do any more with that?
Well, you've looked at, you're talking about West High Street in front of the old water plant, right?
Exactly.
Riverside, Riverside Park.
Yeah, you're right, Mike. It is rough.
Where we've, I mean, it's a, and I've had a few people ask if that's all we're gonna do. There, here, and I, my question, the reason I asked it, I drove a couple of these streets, Cougar Drive being one of them, Edward, Edward Road from Gambier to Marlboro Avenue being another, especially Cougar Drive. I mean, as few cars that travel that compared to West High Street. We haven't even already patched a hole on Cougar Drive. And then I know we, the money is not comparable, West High is wide as it is and as long as it is compared to Cougar Drive, but I think we might be able to get a block or two out of that if we looked at West High.
I mean, that brings up a good point. This was a preliminary list that was put together by the Street Department originally. When engineering went out and looked at some of these streets, you know, just as you guys did, and we put some numbers together. We, two things on Cougar Drive. Number one, we're doing design plans, you know, to build that new roadway out through there. So, we're thinking, do we want to put that money into Cougar Drive at this point, and then possibly, you know, somewhere down the road end up tearing a lot of that out? So, that being said, we will definitely look at some of these. There's a possibility we could take Cougar Drive money and put it towards some patching on West High Street.
Patching as in maybe take some of it up and put new...
Milling it, very similar, like we did on some of these other sections, where we may not pave the whole road, but we would mill out some of the bad sections and be able to, you know, pave a section seven or eight feet wide.
So, then, by passing this tonight, we aren't exactly passing just to do these streets?
These are a preliminary list of streets. You're really saying, you know, this is our concept, but it may change slightly.
Okay, okay.
I know Mr. Fair and I had a conversation today as well, and I, you know, it used to be that John would have a, would be able to be in part of this, and we had a say in, you know, what we're hearing from the people out in the community as well. So, and that's just one. I mean, if you'd like to talk sometime, I'd love to talk to you about it.
So, this was a list that was put together by the Street Department. They kind of prioritize the streets and we just...
West High Street's pretty bad.
We just put some design together. Yeah, and West High Street is bad. ODOT does have it on their paving schedule, but I can't remember off the top of my head. That might be...
It's a couple of years away.
Fifteen or sixteen paving project, but ODOT is looking at paving that.
Cameron, Park Street and Coshockton Avenue are still terrible.
That's on here.
And we're going to have another winter. And, and I've not, I didn't, I intended to get down into Laurelwood, but we've got all the streets in Laurelwood. Do they all need to be repaved?
The only ones that were kind of questionable, I would say yes. If they're on this list, they're in need of some pavement.
Because, you know, we get an awful lot of traffic on Park Street, East High Street, and Coshockton Avenue, and yes, those are ODOT streets.
Park Street is on here.
Not on this one.
No, it's not on this list.
No, Park Road, Park Street is over where my house is.
It says High Street, Public Square to Park Street, to Park Street.
Parks, Park Street that goes from High Street to Coshockton Avenue is really in need.
That section's on here.
And Coshockton Avenue is.
So, and it says to Park Street, that includes Park Street, then?
Yes.
No?
Yes, that would be that section of Park Street.
Well, it says to Park Street, so, so it doesn't...
Our intention is to pick up that section right there, of Park Street.
And when you do, we'd had this conversation before, the left turn lane, the, the actual light activators in the right lane, the, the straight-ahead lane that goes on across to Sugar Street, that, if, when you paint those stripes, I mean, I'd love for you to go out there and look at it. I'd be happy to meet you. But if you're in that space and anybody that's longer than a pickup truck has to cut across the front corner of that, that stop bar.
So, you're saying westbound track, traffic off Coshockton Avenue, making a left-hand turn?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's no reason why that couldn't be moved 30 feet back, because that's where you gotta back up with semis coming through.
Right. Just adds time to your signal, farther you put it back.
If you always, never mind. But I'd love to discuss it.
Sure, we can tell you.
Cameron, if we're talking about striping, now, I've nearly been hit more than once at the corner of Park and High, where people coming off of High Street cut that corner short. There needs to be a marking or something, some means by which the traffic which is going south on Park Street is protected.
One of the things that we're looking at is possibly improving that radius, making it a little bigger radius on that corner, so they don't have to swing out into oncoming traffic as far. That's one thing we are looking at.
Cameron, at some point in the last few months, there was some general discussion about maybe looking at that entire intersection with an eye toward inhibiting truck traffic to go east on High Street. I, I can't remember exactly what the elements of that were, but is this, is this the time to maybe look at that?
I mean, that's a little more than resurfacing.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I mean, it might have been striping and...
Barrier or something to that effect.
Okay.
There's talk about making that a stop, I think, for westbound traffic on High, but that's gonna be a little more than just pavement markings, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, not to take the total lid off of this can of worms here, but, I mean, I, I tend to agree. If we have some high-traffic areas that are in dire need and get hundreds or thousands of cars, as much as I appreciate, you know, some of these other streets that are on the list here may need something, but if they could, if they could do with patching, you know, to get, to get by because of the light volume of traffic and steer money to another, I mean, it just seems, I mean, and I don't want to presume that you guys haven't already thought about this in putting this list together that you're taking into account, but a few of these streets down here do strike me as being low-traffic, low-volume areas that maybe could go a little longer or just get a little bit of patching if there's other areas screaming for attention.
So, what do we want to do? Do we want to start from, start over?
I don't see that, that's why.
You know?
We want you to review it.
Right. I'll certainly, I'll drive these streets. I'll take a look at them. Dave Carpenter gave these streets to me. I had people from my office go out and put the quantities together and put estimates together, but I'll personally go out and drive them. And if there's, Cougar Drive is one of those, I know for a fact that I questioned whether or not we need to put money into that.
No.
Just from the standpoint, I know that somewhere down the road, we may end up tearing that all out anyways, so.
Wow, that would be a waste of money, then, wouldn't it?
It's a, it's a preliminary list.
Yeah.
And if everybody can get their input, the Cameron, we'll come up with the final list. And the list isn't in the legislation, so, you know, it doesn't lock us in, Dave.
Is there something we can do tonight, though, to get the ball rolling as far as getting bids, or do our contractors need to know the particular streets, or are they more interested in the volume?
Now, the contractors will have a full-blown package, and we'll tell them exactly what they're doing.
So, it's premature to go to them and start collecting bids?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We need to know exactly what we're gonna do.
Exactly.
We still could pass this tonight with knowing that we're gonna do it.
What you're authorizing us to do is to advertise for bid and to enter into contract. Now, if you like, if I go back and we modify this list, we can certainly bring that list back to you again, so, for review.
It'd be nice to see.
There again, you're only meeting once a month now, so.
I know, yeah.
I'm probably with the ball down the field.
You probably want to start earlier than that.
I mean, we could always shoot it to you via email or something and just as a cursory review and see if you have any concerns, but.
One of the things that we haven't, haven't mentioned here this evening is that half of this money is coming from this, of the Public Works Commission.
Correct.
We will not officially get notified of that until July 1.
Yeah.
So, we, we really can't do the project. I think it's good to get started on the bidding process. It's just the fact that we can't do anything with the project till after the money's available.
So, if we, if we act tonight, does that help or do no good to you?
It helps. No, it would help. I have no problem passing with the understanding that you'll review it.
Sure.
Cameron, a question I have is some, Sam brought up an issue, and Mike brought up an issue that are on state route. So, if we use city money for state routes, did this estate, if it was a state route, does the state help later? So, is it, or is it our responsibility?
That's a very good question. Mayor and I had that conversation today. Our responsibility on state routes is maintenance. So, if we go out and mill the entire road and resurface it, I think that's a conversation we need to have with ODOT, that when they come into town and they do do paving, and we're responsible for our 20% of those projects, I think the city should somehow get compensation for that, because we've just taken some streets that were currently in their paving schedule and pulled them out of the paving schedule. So, I know when I worked in Richland County, it's a different district, ODOT District Three, the communities would get some credit for that amount of money that they spent on those roads, you know, a little above, above and beyond just normal maintenance. Resurfacing entire roadway is more than just maintenance, so.
Before, I know.
Your time's about up.
My time's about up. Now, I want to make sure we kind of understand what we're doing here. We're inventing the same wheel over and over and over again. If you want me to be part of what this does and go out and look at streets, which is part of my purview, we could have eliminated 10 minutes of this discussion, because I could have come back and told people on council what this situation dealt with. Now, if it's Scott and I, perfect. Scott and I get along really good. He's a good troop, you know? But we could have eliminated a lot of this discussion. We still have two other issues to talk about tonight.
Well, we, one we always used to, the chairperson and the ranking chairperson to look at streets.
That's all I'm saying, you know, because our constituents all probably call us and say, hey, by the way, what about my street, you know? And if you're getting all that for people in your area or whomever, then it'd be incumbent, I think, on whoever that department falls under to be a little more...
That's Street Department. This list came directly from Mr. Carpenter.
And I understand that. Yep. So, I have two more, but I guess I'm out of time, so I don't know.
Well, you just want to briefly hit what they are. We have the one up on Upper Gilcrest, and that's a major, we're, they're paying 10%, and we're paying the rest from TIF money. And what's the other one?
Do you want that passed tonight?
That'd be, that would be good, yes.
Okay, and, and the last one is the ordinance for the Coshockton right-of-way. Oh, White Ears.
White Ears.
Oh, White Ears, that's the request.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
Yeah, there's no hurry for that.
No, but, okay, cool. Thank you very much.
John, can we do a, then, can you ask for committee meeting, next meeting as well to discuss that?
Are we gonna have time for committee meetings?
White Ears?
Yeah, the next meeting.
We got commissioners' next meeting.
Just going through readings, meeting after that. The reason I said, there was questions, one last statement in the public hearing was, Mr. Glass, we're making a recommendation, let's see, we're making a recommendation to council so in the next month or six weeks we can check this all out. And there was a lot of questions asked in that meeting, so that's how it was kind of left. So, I thought maybe we could answer those questions before, I don't know how you're gonna do it.
Okay.
Maybe I can contact...
You guys work together on that and when you want to have a committee meeting, because we need to move on. We're gonna adjourn the streets and public buildings. We're gonna move on to finance and budget. Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry I took two minutes for my own meeting. We have a CDBG Downtown Rehabilitation Grant we're working on. I see Carrie Habers here. You must be the spokesperson tonight.
Yeah.
Due to time restraints, I'm just gonna have you come on up, Carrie. I think we all know Carrie's the downtown manager. She's been working with Pat on this grant. And I'll just let you have the time, and if I need to butt in at the end, I will.
I didn't know if I needed to say anything or not, so I don't have anything prepared, but does anybody...
The grant basically covers infrastructure, sidewalks, curbs, and...
Facade renovations of buildings. Does anybody have any questions?
The area we're talking about is...
The target area that's proposed right now is West High Street from, actually, it would start at Gay Street and go to Sandusky Street, as well as the Public Square and one block north on North Main, as well as one block south on South Main. It would sweep down and include the Woodward and the Hotel as contributing projects, though neither of those projects would receive any funding.
But those add strength to the grant.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a competitive grant, and that would very much strengthen our position.
Carrie, can you state what the maximum amount of project cost can be and what share the, the property owner must provide?
Sure. It sort of depends on the total number of projects that we're looking at. We're estimating that the maximum amount awarded would be 15,000 per project. If we have enough buildings, enough properties that are interested, if somebody owns three properties, for example, we may limit them to just one property at a time until we know that everybody has received funding that wanted to receive funding.
Carrie, I have mentioned a couple of times the corner here at the corner of, of North Main and West Chestnut, the southwest corner. I would hope that that corner could be included in this project, because not only is it a problem for the residents there, the business residents there, but it also doesn't do anything for the way Mount Vernon looks to visitors.
Are you talking about the sidewalk itself?
The curbing.
The curbing.
There is no curbing.
It is in our target...
And the water, the gravel, everything runs right down.
It is in our target area. It is. So, we would definitely consider that.
So, I would certainly lobby for including that corner.
The city actually makes the final decision on the exact target area.
Yes, I'm clear. I had a question from our church, the director of our church. You said it starts at Gay Street, but we're at the corner of Gay and High. That's not included since it's the other side, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, starts at Gay and goes west?
Goes west.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you, Carrie.
And the one piece we haven't touched on, Carrie, and I'll let you, you're more knowledgeable in it than I am, the fact that if somebody was to use these funds towards work on their building, about the 10 points that we've reviewed?
Yes, that's correct. You can put into place that basically anyone who uses these funds or applies for the funds, those are the only people who will need to adhere to those 10 standards. So, if someone is not interested in receiving grant funding and they still want to make a change to their building, that's fine. I mean, they would have to adhere to local zoning codes, but.
Yeah, I appreciate your saying that so that the public understands that.
There are ethics and codes that they have to maintain regardless.
And I believe you've been in contact with business owners, is that correct?
We have been. Actually, we just, I just came from a meeting at the ALCO where we had both property owners and business owners. And we've received quite a bit of interest, about 15 properties right now that are interested in doing some work. So, that's a lot of positive response. We're very excited about that.
So, Carrie, the project would be 15, or they're eligible to get 15, in which case they have to provide equal amount?
Yes, that's correct.
So, it's 50/50?
So, if, if they did a $30,000 project, they would receive 15,000 maximum for their project.
Okay.
And who approves that, the project?
They have to go through an application process. They also do have to go through some sort of a state review process for that as well.
There's a local committee review and then a state review of each of the projects.
Mayor, I got a question. Maybe you could, I've got a document here on your letter that says 410,000, but the legislation says 300,000.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
How much is the grant?
The total grant is 300,000.
So, where did we get the, the 410,000 that we've seen earlier?
The, the downtown, what's your name of your group? You've got a grant of $250,000 from another place, another person?
We do, yes.
Oh, all right.
Another organization has committed $250,000 to the, to the project as well.
So, collectively, you're gonna have 550.
Yes.
Is it going to work in the same manner?
Um, that is according to that organization's wishes, and we have not completely finalized that yet.
Okay.
Keep in mind, this is a grant application, and those additional funds that become available makes your request more desirable when you're, you're picking up a larger percentage, you know?
Sure.
And just to repeat, the Hotel and the Woodward are not part of this project, but they are mentioned in the grant because of ongoing projects that they're doing strengthens the grant. So, the funding does not touch either one of those projects. We'd actually like to see more of it go directly towards the building owners in the targeted area.
Yeah.
The work that the city is going to be doing upcoming at the Sandusky Street intersection will count toward that as well.
Yeah. These grants won't, we won't get final approval till the fall, and then are good for two years.
And if I can add, and in the way we still have some time, council, you see there, the application date is due June 20. It is on emergency legislation. I will ask for passage on emergency legislation simply because, what have you had this? Two months you've been trying to put this together?
Yeah, not very much time.
I mean, just to get it to this point. So, there hasn't been, and it is to apply to get a grant at no matching funds of the city. So, that's why I'll be asking for suspension of the rule. Is there any questions on that?
No, we've heard about this before. We've been, we've been discussing it and seeing
Carrie, you got six more minutes.
Does anybody have any additional questions?
Then I'd like to ask a question, just to kind of pinpoint, because I am just a tad unclear. Apparently, we have a city-sponsored project of sidewalks, curbs, pedestrian ramps, and crosswalks in the target area with an estimate of 410,000, all grant money. Okay? How does that 410,000 for that portion, which I presume does not include the individual property owners?
Right.
Projects? How, how does that relate to the 300,000?
300 and the 250,000 grant from a different person.
Different grant.
So, we're talking, though, this is something that's already been committed to the project locally.
Okay, so it isn't...
So, now we're talking about 550,000 dollars.
In a pool, okay. Now, we're talking about two grant pools, not, not just a block grant.
400,000 dollars of infrastructure and 150,000 dollars of...
Beautification.
Crystal clear now. Thank you.
And we're only asking to approve it, to apply for the 300,000.
The 300.
And this, this is only to basically seek permission to apply at this point, since the city has to be the applicant. So, it just depends on if we receive the grant, which we will hear in September, and then further planning will take place.
And then that triggers another grant process, application process on the part of the individual project.
Counsel, just as a piece of clarification, there was a legislation laying on the desk tonight, this very same piece, added with section number four, and that was the emergency piece of legislation. That was the only change, this number four, the section four was added, explaining the emergency. Any other questions? Well, I guess you can go home four minutes early. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you first, Frank.
We're joining the finance and budget, and we'll now move on just a couple minutes early to Parks and Lands and Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, President. We have two pieces of legislation that we need to discuss here. One, utility rights right-of-way for Ohio Cumberland Gas Company, and another one for the Ohio Power Company. And I just learned of these right before a very busy weekend, so I'm going to let Dave Glass tell us about these.
All right. Well, let's start with the Ohio Power easement. This is the Hiawatha, Cameron, can you pull up a map of the, oh, I'm sorry, you went the other place first. This is part of that same project that we dealt with the Ohio Power Company down in Memorial Park, and they are actually rebuilding that entire power line from Mount Vernon Avenue, clear up the academia. And part of that goes through the eastern edge, along the eastern edge of Hiawatha Park, which is actually east of the creek, very near the, the golf course parking lot. If you drive out there, you can see where the, the pole line is. And first of all, there's no emergency on this. They're just trying to clean up easements they've had for, since the early 1900s. The easement you're looking at, the power line is, is basically right down the property line, and they want to establish a 50-foot-wide easement. They presently have a blanket easement over the whole property from 1913 when everybody wanted power, you know? Now, people don't care. If you look, did, did, did a sketch come in your package?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You can see that the, the portion that's blackened out in there a little bit is only 22-foot wide at one end and 16-foot wide at the other end, and it runs the entire length of the east side of the Hiawatha Park property. And that, and that is basically where that line of poles is that you can see if you go out there today. I don't, I'm not sure that explained everything, but I'm certainly open for a question.
Dave, if I may, when we talk 50 feet, that's pretty wide.
Right.
What is that impact going to be up on Hiawatha Golf Course and upon the creek?
Well, there's no, I don't believe there's any impact on either. You know, we went through the easements with them six months ago when this project started and granted them a couple of little permissions to, of how they were going to get to the poles that they're replacing up there, and they're actually getting to those from our side. You know, how, I don't believe there's any effect with the golf course, but you know, that's between them and the golf course. That's really something I deal with.
Have we addressed this at all with Hiawatha? Are they aware of what's going on and when's going on?
They contact everybody.
So AEP did the contact and not us?
Yeah, that's not our responsibility here.
So they should be up to snuff on exactly what's going to happen and everything else?
If you stop out there and maybe ask some questions, I can call.
I just want to be prepared for what I do.
Or I'll give them a contact, so.
I have a question about, I'm sorry.
So could we just have a single reading on this tonight?
Yeah, that's what, that's what he said. Just have a first reading.
Yeah, there's no hurry.
The thing I was, maybe I'm apples and oranges here a little bit. AEP, AEP, does that have to do with the line or whatever from Vine Street over and up and around? That's causing quite a controversy. I didn't realize AEP had the ability to be able to come into a person's home and say, you know, we're going to buy it, and then we're going to tear it down, correct? And you know, they had that kind of an authority, and that was, that's interesting. When I asked him about those poles, and some of them are pretty good size.
Oh, they are.
They said, this was Nelson and Nelson, so it wasn't an AEP guy, you know, he said, well, you know, we don't, we're not in that part of the deal. But if you look at that pole right there, just consider it wider and 20 feet higher. Wow.
It's 90-foot poles.
Wow. And then, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's been, I don't want to say torn up, that's probably a bad adjective. There have been a lot of brush removed, a lot of concern about the little creeks and whatever. And talking with you, make sure I'm not misinformation. We don't have a whole lot to say with that. It's AEP, and they have jurisdiction here?
They have jurisdiction over the right-of-ways they have on people's property, sure.
Absolutely. They've got an absolute right to maintain their easement so that trees, brush, those sorts of things don't grow up where it can jeopardize their wires.
I understand that, and I didn't realize that, honest I did. All the years I've, all the years I've lived here, I never realized they had that kind of power.
Mr. Fair, if I could, I did talk to George Curry, who's a neighbor right across the street, and he had told me they were contacted by AEP. AEP, AEP did work out the easement with him, and also told me they give the lady that owned the house a very favorable price for her house.
I understand that too, and I talked to the lady who owns the house, and I talked to George Curry also, and they didn't seem to care. But the lady across the street in that yellow house has got it made. I mean, they're just, you know, they're getting their money. I didn't realize. Could they have taken that if she said, no, I want to stay?
I have another question, if I may.
I don't know an answer for that one, John.
I don't, yeah, I was just asking.
I had a call from someone who was concerned about the added height, the added size of the poles, and whether or not this line is of higher intensity and from a health standpoint. You know, there is grave concern about having high-power lines nearer to your home. So can you address that? Is this a higher power line than what has been there earlier?
It's my understanding that it is not.
Okay.
Now, health problems, you know, I'm no doctor and no power expert, so I'll stay away from that one, so.
Well, they were concerned if it's a higher power than what, you know, I don't know that anyone has had health problems from what exists currently.
Well, there's been studies done. People, some people think there's conditions. My wife wouldn't live around one. But it'd be nice if AEP was asked that question, maybe let us know if it, if it does pull a higher vote. Just, people ask the question, I've been asked.
Mr. Zimmerman, you want to address that question?
Sure.
I talked to AEP when we just did the easements and stuff. No, it's a 69,000-volt line that runs through Memorial, and the reason is it's going to stay the same. They're just cleaning up the voltage. That's also the line that runs to Gambier. There's a lot of draws on that line, and by rerouting this, they're able to change some of the draw off of that.
So the one going to Hiawatha is the same, or?
Yeah, my understanding is all the voltages are staying the same.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Okay, so this will get a first reading tonight, okay? Now for the other resolution, the one that involves Ohio Cumberland Gas. Mr. Glass?
This is, like you said, it's Ohio Cumberland, and they are proposing to build a line. Watch, Cameron, as we zoom in here. On the left side of that picture, the city has the railroad right-of-way there from Madison Street up to Davis, which is that real short street as you cross the tracks on Columbus Road on your right. Cumberland Gas is proposing to build a gas line along the property that we have, the former railroad right-of-way, as they go to this brand-new compressed natural gas station that's going to be built behind Speedway.
So it's already in the bike path, correct, with a presumed bike path? The gas line's already in the railroad?
No, no, there's nothing there now, not on our property.
I spoke to one of the residents that's listed here, Ed Welker, and also spoke to Melanie Poole, who's also listed here. And Mr. Welker was telling me that there was a gas line laid years ago that, through that, what is, he called the presumed bike path of the future? Is that on the map anywhere?
There are, there is an existing line. I'm not sure exactly where it ends, if it goes all the way to Madison Street or not. But I'm talking on the radar, there is an existing gas line there, and it's going to remain there.
Is this the same line?
Same location, but not the same line. There'll be a new line that'll be installed.
So there'll be a second one put in?
Yes, that's correct. It'll pretty much be laying just right on top of it.
And that's what, when you talk on the east lands of the Welkers and the south lands of the Welkers and Melanie Poole's, so that's, when you, in this language, and, because we didn't have a map for this one, because I was out trying to, I guess Davis Street's kind of like an abandoned street now, I'm getting from the neighbors?
It's just that first half block there, that it just goes straight through to the old tracks.
So when you talk about these lands of these neighbors, this is actually then that bike path you're talking about?
Yeah, it's bordered by those, it's not on that land.
It's bounded by those lands.
Right, right.
Some of it will follow the bike path, and then they're going to be off of that, I believe, but don't have all these that's running, and follow the old Davis Street there.
This is strictly easement that we would be offering them or providing them, and that's just on the property that we own, which is the former railroad right-of-way. You know, they're, they are going to go onto Davis Street, and they are going to cross Columbus Road, and they have an easement from the commissioners across their property down there where the CAT offices are. You know, there's a lot of little parts to this puzzle that have to come.
So we're only talking?
This is our part.
Just the railroad, that then?
Yes.
And Davis Street?
Davis Street is not in the city. That does not affect the city.
See, that's the confusing part.
I thought that was a city's right-of-way.
It's Clinton Township.
It's not in the township.
South of, south of the railroad.
It's underwater, in the first lake.
That's ours.
Well, when I was out talking to these people, there's a lot of confusion of who owns what where.
I know where our property is, so I'm not sure where Mr. Welker's is.
Well, he has several.
He has a lot, I know.
On Norton, no, Madison.
Madison Street.
But anyways, this is part of the confusion, what's going on with Foundation Park. In talking to these neighbors, I was being told that the city of Mount Vernon owns all these houses that are being torn down. And I, you know, people, there's so much going on so fast and money being spent different ways, people are in a lot of confusion. Offers are being made on houses. People can't sell houses. I mean, there's just a lot of different, and that's why the confusion without a map, that's why we asked the questions.
But speaking for Foundation Park Conservancy, which I can, the city doesn't own those properties. Foundation Park Conservancy.
I know that, but there's a lot of people on Madison Street that don't own, don't do that. You know, all those houses that have holes in them where the doors and windows are taken off, they're sitting there. People are thinking the city of Mount Vernon's doing that, and I'm saying, no, that's the conservatory. But that's what I ran into just yesterday.
Yeah, we just have to keep repeating that message.
Mrs. Carl, your time is just about up. What's your intention tonight as far as the rules?
Well, I know that Mr. Glass thinks that we need to go ahead and approve this tonight.
If we have to wait a month, we'll have to wait a month, but the compressed natural gas station is getting started.
I have a question. I asked Mrs. Carl. We've been talking about this for a year. I can't believe Cumberland Gas came here last week and said, I need this easement. Why is it, why are we asking an emergency again tonight?
I just received it a couple of days before you guys received it.
I, you know, I have a hard time passing and asking to at least let it go two readings. I mean, I don't want to hold up any project, but we just got hung over the hotel for passing it on an emergency basis.
After three readings?
We didn't pass that on an emergency?
We vacated an alley on an emergency basis.
Alley, not the hotel, okay. Not the easement?
The alley that the hotel now owns.
I thought you were talking about the easement. We spent 12 weeks on that one, if you recall.
Okay, what are we feeling here? I mean, do we want to?
I want only one vote.
Okay. Do we want to give it a first reading tonight?
Well, you know. You can pass it. You need, you need five votes. Five votes? So you, five people have to agree to suspend the rule, so that's up to you, so then if you want to take it to ask that or not.
Is anybody?
It's your committee.
Okay, how, what are we, what are we thinking here? One reading, one reading, one reading? Okay, one reading.
Okay.
Okay.
We're adjourning the Parks and Lands. We're ready for the employee and community relations with Mr. Francis. You have two pieces of legislation, or actually ordinances tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know there's questions for both of these, and right now, with respect to all of us, ordinance 2014-09. I'm going to ask for one reading, and then I'm going to request executive session at the end of this meeting so we can discuss this ordinance deeper together, and then we can discuss ordinance 2014-11. Right now, I will open that up to any questions anybody has to the ordinance establishing the rate of compensation for the employee designated as the city of Mount Vernon's backup operator of record for the water and wastewater treatment plants and declaring an emergency.
I'd just like to ask, I'm sure that there's, what is the basis of that particular number, the 625?
That is the difference between Matthias Orndorf stepped up to take control, I shouldn't say take control, to act as our operator of record, something we're required to have, not only for the distribution system, but the water plant and the wastewater plant for the EPA, when Judy announced her retirement. Judy's retirement is not effective until the first. But Matthias has had to sit in the last 30 days as the official operator of record because she's had, Judy has used uptime, all of her accumulated compensatory time before she left. And we're required to have an operator of record responsible for all three of those divisions on site, a certain number of hours every week. That's why, so the $6.25 per hour extra for that 30 days is the difference between his pay and her pay. And she is not a, she's an administrator. She was not a bargaining unit member. If she would have been a bargaining unit member, we just could have assigned him to do that work. But because she's, she was outside the bargaining unit, then we had to find a different way to compensate him.
And the date, the ending date, June 5th, the significance of that date is what?
That's the 30 days that EPA approved him to be in charge of that.
Okay, so if they, if we need to extend him for some reason, we'll be back doing this again?
It's potentially there. There's a lot of little pieces being worked with the Environmental Protection Agency. You know, one of the things that's made it difficult for us, the staff, especially the wastewater treatment plant, is because it's a Class IV plant. They class plants in magnitude. And we're working with the EPA right now, and it looks like we'll be downgraded to a Class III plant, which we have several people that would be capable of running those plants without discompensation.
So is this, do you?
My question, this has been signed off by the bargaining unit. It's okay to them?
I spoke with the union, they're fine with it, yes.
And then the, the second is, we're required to have somebody on site by EPA regulations, right?
Somebody who is the operator of record at each plant for a certain number of hours, yes. That, like Mike said earlier, we're not required to pay this amount, but that is the amount, that is the difference between his pay now and what the prior person was making, the person who's retiring.
Dave?
Yes.
I think that also we need to clarify the difference between a Class III and a Class IV, that Cleveland and Columbus are Class IVs, so do we really need to be a Class IV?
Well, that's not really a choice that we have. I mean, those are, those are set by the rules of the Environmental Protection Agency. And just that, we are right now at the end of a five-year cycle. We get a permit to operate those plants in the last five years. The permit on the wastewater treatment plant is going to expire in July. The Ohio Environmental Protection Agency has changed their rules in the last five years, and it looks as though we're going to be downgraded to a III. No guarantees, but it looks as though that's where we're headed, so.
Back to the position. So is this person now the utilities' operation foreman?
No.
Is that on this list, Karen, you gave me?
No, this person would be the pre-treatment coordinator.
Lab technician, pre-treatment coordinator.
So this would bring him up to Judy's wage?
Yes.
And then her position then is going to be, is that a tested position? It is, correct?
She's the administrator of customer service and billing, yeah.
If we've...
Oh, I'm sorry, the other side, yeah. Treatment, distribution.
You're talking about Judy Scott, right?
Yes.
So, and that position, we're currently looking at what we might be doing with that position anyways, correct?
Right.
I'm a little confused. So after June 5th, what happens? You know, like, so we're paying him through June 5th. At this point, who is the official person of record after that?
It's a little longer story than this. Do you want the, the longer version?
Give me the Cliff Notes.
We were allowed to get approval to cover that 30 days by an existing Class III operator, which is what Matthias is. So we got that 30-day approval because she's still employed and she's just on vacation. It's just like an extended vacation. After the 5th here, after the 1st of June and after the 5th, Matthias has applied for his Class IV license, and the Environmental Protection Agency has the authority. One of the things you have to do to get a Class IV license is to be in charge of a Class IV plant for a certain period of time. So he's applied. They have the ability to assign him to this plant, and then he can cover us after that. Does that make sense to you?
Well, he doesn't have to go through civil service or anything in order to get that Judy's position. I don't, that's why I'm confused.
Well, he doesn't have Judy's position. We're just paying him for that position.
Until June 5th. That's the legislation that goes to June 5th.
Right.
What's he getting paid on June 6th?
He'll be making his own wage unless we do something else.
But who's going to be the person of record on June 6th?
Well, that's the part that we're working on. He could potentially be that.
He could be that person.
And we could go there, if, if the EPA chooses to make him, qualify him to do this time in a Class IV plant so he can get his Class IV license.
So if they don't approve it, where are we on June 6th?
If they don't approve it?
If they don't approve it?
We have to have a Class IV operator.
We'll have to go find somebody.
I've already, if you recall, we did that, I don't know, 10 years ago, Mayor, was that when we did that? Where we had a Class IV license, had to hire a Class IV person to come in for a couple of years while Judy got her experience? It may have been 15 years ago.
Yeah, I remember.
I'm confident after talking to the EPA today that they'll give us permission to operate the plant with Class III operators until the issue of the qualifications of the plant are resolved this summer.
Is the amount of money that is listed in this ordinance, the 625 per hour, is that arbitrary? Or is it something that is?
It was the difference in pay between?
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, but I mean, he's obviously not Judy Scott either.
Right.
And so I didn't know if that was something that you just decided to, to put into this, to give him, or was, is it, you know, something that has to be given him?
Well, no, there's no, there's no has to give somebody something.
He's probably expecting it, since we've already talked to the union on it, correct?
What's that?
He's probably expected it, though. He's already doing the job.
He's doing the job. He would be expecting it, yes.
Only talking about paying him that for four weeks.
Yeah. It adds up to about $1,080 is what it is.
Yeah, if we, if we were talking about an extended agreement here, I think I'd have some difficulty because as Susan said, he's, he's not doing everything that Judy did. But for a 30-day period, he has stepped up, he's keeping us operating. I, I, I think it's probably...
Well, he's expected. We don't have a choice, I mean...
Well, no, we have a choice until we pass it, but, but...
You always have a choice.
We could always go back to the union if we wanted to, but I, I don't think for a 30-day period, this is an unreasonable arrangement. As long as there's no expectation that it would continue.
He's been cleared by the EPA, right, so he's doing the job.
We are in compliance with the EPA.
They've cleared him, okayed him to do the job.
If I may, Judy indicated to me before she left that she has been grooming Matthias for some time. She has known this was coming, and she has been grooming him for some time. So I think probably he has learned more than maybe we might have expected that he would have learned during that brief time that he has, has held the position.
I think we're in good hands. Yeah.
Mr. McConville, did you ask a comment?
This is really only a union issue as far as paying him additional money. This is really only a union issue as far as paying him additional money. Union doesn't need to be consulted outside of that, because this would, it would be outside the collective bargaining agreement if they didn't approve it for a bargaining unit member. But we're dealing with something that's not inside the bargaining unit, so that's the only union issue that's involved here.
So they have no intention of a ULP?
No.
That's all, you know, that's all we need.
And that's all that matters.
That's right.
I'm going to ask for suspension of the rules on this tonight, and take it to its third and final reading, so.